Today, we have a proclamation. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, and rural areas, including San Marcos, and whereas community planning and plans such as the Vision SMTX Comprehensive Plan, the Downtown Plan, Neighborhood Area Plans, and the Historic Preservation Plan can help manage and direct this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work, live, and play. And whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of San Marcos, and whereas the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation, and whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America, and whereas American Planning Association endorses National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight how planning is essential to achieving a community's vision for the future, and how planners can lead communities to equitable, resilient, and long-lasting places. And whereas the celebration of National Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Historic Preservation Commission, the Zoning Board of Adjustments, and thousands of citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of San Marcos by getting involved in planning initiatives. And whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community planners of the city of San Marcos, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to the public service by these professionals. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Community Planning Month, and do hereby call upon all persons of the city of San Marcos to recognize the essential contributions of community planning to our quality of life and the future of San Marcos, and to get involved in many of the ongoing plans, including the Historic Preservation Plan and numerous Neighborhood Area Plans currently in progress. Thank you all for what you do, and everything else I would have said is already in here, so just double that.
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, Planning Month is more than just the professional planning staff that we have here today, but also our Planning and Zoning Commissioners, our Zoning Board of Adjustments, Historic Preservation Commissioners, and elected officials who make a lot of these plans and initiatives happen, and all the citizen planners who participate in the many plans that we constantly have going on. We've got seven long-range plans happening in San Marcos right now, and also all of our current planning initiatives, like our permits, our zoning cases, many of the things that our, our planning and zoning team look at. And I will also let Amanda, our director, make a few words as well about our upcoming event.
I was gonna let her talk about the event, but we would like to invite everybody, community, staff, anyone who wants to attend on Wednesday, October 23rd, from 3:00 until 6:00 PM. We will be at the Mobility Hub on Hutchison. We're having a meet and greet. We are just going to go out and stand under some shade, or it will be cool, and we just want to talk to you. We want to let you know what we do, how our department can help, and, and, you know, when we can't help, that we can help you get to the person you need to get to, and really just get to know us. We are people that love and care about San Marcos, and we want to share that with anyone who would like to join us. October 23rd, 3:00 to 6:00 PM, at the Mobility Hub on Hutchison, which is across from Showdown, behind Craft House. Thank you.
Thank you. A proclamation. And there's a lot of information in here, because Eddie Durham did a lot of stuff. Whereas Eddie Durham was born in the historic Dunbar neighborhood in San Marcos, Texas, on August 19th of 1906 into a talented family of musicians. As a youngster, he mastered the banjo, guitar, and trombone during the circus and minstrel circuits with his family and the Durham Brothers Orchestra. And whereas in his twenties, this exceptional musician traveled in the Southwest with various bands: the Oklahoma Blue Devils Orchestra with the Mamie Smith Show in 1927. In 1929, he joined Benny Moten's Kansas City Orchestra, contributing to its evolution and modernization with compositions and arrangements. And whereas Durham was a creative innovator, responsible for taking many classic hits to another level, often bringing recognition to other musicians. He produced one of the first recordings using a riff, a melodic device deriving from West African music, which became the foundation of the Kansas City Sound in the heyday of jazz and swing music in America. And whereas in the '30s, Durham performed and arranged with many bands, such as Artie Shaw, Glenn Miller, and catapulted the Count Basie Band to fame with his compositions and arrangements like Swingin' the Blues, Topsey, One O'Clock Jump, and Moten Swing. And whereas in 1938, inventor and musician Durham was the first to record using an amplified guitar on Jimmy Lunsford's recording of Hittin' the Bottle. And whereas during the 1940s, Durham composed I Don't Want to Set the World on Fire for the Ink Spots, led his own band, was a musical director for an all-girl band, The International Sweethearts of Rhythm, and created a brass quartet, The Durhamettes, with singer Ina Rae Hutton. And whereas Durham pursued an active career throughout his life, contributing arrangements, producing videos and albums, and touring Europe with the Harlem Blues and Jazz Band in the 1980s. Eddie Durham was inducted in both the National Academy of Recording Arts and Sciences and the American Jazz Hall of Fame. And whereas Eddie Durham, who died on March 6th of 1987, is recognized by those in jazz circles as one of the most important composers, arrangers of the swing area and American music. And whereas the Calaboose African-American History Museum annually celebrates Durham's legacy with a free hometown jazz festival to be held this year on October 19th in Eddie Durham Park, 205 MLK Drive, with continuous jazz and blues, food carts and vendors from 11:00 to 6:00 PM. And whereas Eddie Durham's daughter and biographer, Topsey M. Durham, and her husband, blues musician, musician Michael Powers, will be special guests from New York. Topsey will serve as MC, Michael will perform as featured artist with Austin-based Blues Review. And whereas WVIAPA's Wham, Bree, Ba, Boom, Bam, The Swing Jazz of Eddie Durham, 57-minute documentary extolling Durham's rich legacy of contributions to the history of jazz, premiered on hundreds of PBS stations across the country on February 1st, and garnered a 2024 Mid-Atlantic Emmy nomination. And whereas these San Marcos performances and interview, interviews are woven through Wham!, and it will be shown for free at the Lost River Film Fest in partnership with the Calaboose on Friday, October 18th, 5:30 PM, at the Price Center, 222 West San Antonio Street, followed by a Q&amp;A with Topsey M. Durham. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of October 13th to 19th of 2024 as Eddie Durham Week, and do hereby call upon all persons of San Marcos to celebrate the accomplishments of Eddie Durham. Thank you for bringing this to us, to recognize Eddie Durham, and also, who wants to talk about the festival and what's going on? Linda?
I just got drafted. Yeah, this is, I, we're always trying to figure out which festival this is, the 24th, or the 10th, or the 15th, or whatever.
We don't celebrate it anyway.
But we celebrate it annually, and the very first one was in City Park. Actually, the very first one was at the Calaboose itself, on a trailer back. And Topsey came out in, in 2004, I believe, and we welcomed her, the mayor at the time. This is not to say this is something you should do, but gave her the key to the city, and she, she laughed and said when she was making her hotel reservation, "Don't you think they would just let me in with that key?" Anyway, the film on Friday night will give you a total background. They often say that Eddie Durham is the least well-known genius of jazz, and people who have known him as musicians, historians, and fellow players were determined to create a legacy film, so that would not, no longer be the case. And it's very wonderful, and it has many scenes from San Marcos as well, because they came here with the film crew and shot a lot of film. So we hope you can come to the Price Center on Friday, meet Marcia and Michael, and see the film, and then come to the festival all day from 11:00 until 6:00, continuous amazing music.
Y'all will come.
When I focus in green, can you take a couple steps to your right? There we go. Back up to your left this long. There you go. Awesome. Okay. Everybody looking this way, four big smiles. Ready, one, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Last one, one, two, and three. We got it. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. A proclamation. have evolved here naturally before European settlers arrived, plants that thrive in particular ecosystems without direct or indirect human interventions. And whereas founded in 1981, the Native Plant Society of Texas has expanded its outreach with over 30 chapters to promote the conservation, research, and utilization of native plants and plant habitats of Texas through education, outreach, and example. And whereas Texas Native Plant Week began with the vision of Fay Testnow and Barbara Anderson, two members of the Highland Lakes Chapter, who led the effort to push the proclamation to the Texas Legislature until it became law on September 1st of 2009. And whereas native plants conserve water, provide habitats for birds, wildlife, and butterflies, protect the soil with long root systems, eliminate or reduce pollutants, and the need for herbicides and other chemical inputs, and whereas habitat loss and fragmentation, limited water for environmental flows, invasive species, and climate change are some of the major challenges to conservation and biodiversity in Texas, according to the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department. And whereas founded in 2017, the Hill Country Chapter of the Native Plant Society of Texas uses various in-person and online platforms to advocate and educate the public about native plants, organizes field trips and guided nature hikes within Hayes County, manages plant lists and databases, and partners with various allied groups throughout the year. And whereas conservation organizations in San Marcos, including the San Marcos Discovery Center, the San Marcos River Foundation, the San Marcos Green Belt Alliance, the Meadow Center for Water Environment, and the Mermaid Society, work to promote stewardship, stewardship of our natural resources. And whereas homeowners, homeowner associations, landscapers, and local policymakers can help protect ecosystems, benefit wildlife, birds, and the insects they need to survive by selecting native plants when making their landscaping decisions. And whereas this annual celebration during the third full week of October is a reminder that everyone has a role to play to preserve our native landscape for generations to come. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of October 20th through the 26th of 2024 as Texas, Texas Native Plant Week, and do hereby call upon the residents of San Marcos to join us in recognizing the importance native plants play in the ecosystem to promote wildlife, pollination, and combat soil erosion. Thank you all for what you do. This is really important stuff.
Well, I just wanted to thank Lance Jones and Dick McBride for joining us today. They are both great volunteers with both San Marcos Discovery Center and the San Marcos Green Belt Alliance. And then Amy Tomitis is here with Keep San Marcos Beautiful, and did you want to say a few words about the certification program? That would be great.
Hi, Amy Tomitis, the Community Enhancement Initiatives Manager for the city. We have a certified habitat stewardship program, which encourages people to go from turf lawns to native habitats, landscaping, to help with just not the pollinators and water retention, but stormwater runoff. So yes, we have launched that this year, so look it up on our website.
Thank you for all you do. Thank you, Amy. A proclamation. Whereas Harvey Edward Miller was born November 9th of 1929 in Rocky Hollow, a freedom colony near Georgetown. Born to Frank and Eleanor Miller, Harvey accepted Jesus as his Lord and Savior at a young age. And whereas following his marriage in 1948, the Miller family moved to San Marcos in 1966. Mr. Miller served a distinguished career at Gary Jobcorps Center, and his wife, Arabelle, Arabelle Miller, became the first Black nurse at the Hayes County Health Department. And whereas Mr. Miller served as a member of the Bridge Builders Organization to improve race relations in the late 1960s, which transformed the Dunbar School into a park and recreation center for all children. And whereas Harvey Miller helped revitalize the Juneteenth Celebration commemorating the freeing of Texas slaves in 1865, helping people appreciate the significant contributions of Black citizens. And whereas deacon Harvey Miller is recognized for his role as a deacon at Greater Bethel Baptist Church, as the founder of the Dunbar Heritage Association, and the recipient of the 2008 Spirit of San Marcos Award, and many other awards. And whereas deacon Harvey Miller, aged 90, went to be with the Lord on September 1st of 2020, passing peacefully surrounded by family and friends. And whereas the Dunbar Heritage Association honors his legacy, celebrating his 95th birthday with the Fourth Annual Harvey Miller Day of Service, the first Saturday in November, to pay homage to this trailblazer, civil rights hero, community builder, youth worker, and the family man known as the Good Lookin' Fella, in recognition of his 54 years of service to the San Marcos community. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the 22nd day of November as the Harvey Miller Day of Service, and call upon the citizens of San Marcos to recognize the contributions of this esteemed citizen and honor him by serving the community on the Fourth Annual Harvey Miller Day of Service. Thank you.
First of all, I just want to say thank you everybody for being out here today, and thanking the mayor for taking time out to read the proclamation for the Harvey Miller Day of Service. I know you probably wonder why, but my dad also used to collect cans, so he was keeping San Marcos beautiful just by collecting cans. So we wanted to honor him in that area. So on that Saturday, which is the November 2nd, we're gonna be gathering at the Eddie Durham Park at 8:45 with the volunteers to come out and keep America, I mean, keep San Marcos beautiful as well, with Amy, and she's gonna help out. We're gonna collaborate also with the food bank, and this year we're gonna be adding a shredder. So if you have anything that needs to be shredded, documents or anything, bring them out, and we will shred them. Also, make sure you bring canned goods, perishable goods, to, to support the food bank. But we're gonna also be at the Eddie Durham, so we're gonna start at Eddie Durham Park, go down MLK, as well as Center Street. Hopefully, if we have enough volunteers, we're gonna also go down Valley Street and the streets in between, clean up, and then turn back around and meet back at the Eddie Durham Park to make sure everything's picked up, gather the food bank, make sure they have their truck full, and as well as the shredder, we want to make sure we utilize them. But we do want to thank you for taking time out.
What time, what time does it end? Because people don't need to be bringing their shredding stuff till 5:00 PM.
Well, hopefully, it will end at 1:00 PM, at the Eddie Durham Park.
Thank you. A proclamation. Whereas every person in his or her lifetime will experience the loss of a friend or family member, and whereas Dia de los Muertos, or Day of the Dead, is a traditional cultural holiday that has been celebrated throughout the world for hundreds of years. And whereas Dia de los Muertos does not celebrate death, but rather is of rejoicing and celebration of life, and is seen as a time of renewal and remembrance when our family and friends who have died are remembered on this special day. And whereas the late Douglas Cooper has been selected as the 2024 Dia de los Muertos 5K Honoree for his many contributions to the San Marcos community. He served his country in the United States Air Force and was a proud veteran. He had a strong work ethic and sense of duty which drove him to public service. He was a dedicated member of the Knights of Columbus, St. Vincent de Paul Society, League of Latin, United Latin American Citizens, and a board member of the Johnny T. Rosales Memorial Scholarship Organization. He was a dedicated public servant and worked for over decade, two decades for the city of San Marcos. Through his good works, he was an inspiration for us all. And whereas the 11th Annual Dia de los Muertos 5K Run Walk and Kids Fun Run will take place on Saturday, October 26th of 2024, at Hernandez Elementary School in San Marcos, with proceeds going to the Johnny T. Rosales Memorial Scholarship nonprofit organization. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the 26th day of October as Dia de los Muertos 5K Day, and do hereby call upon all persons of the city of San Marcos to take time to honor the memory of our beloved family and friends, and to support this annual community event.
Hello, my name is Celia Rosales. I'm the race director for the 11th Annual Dia de los Muertos 5K. This goes on every fall. We honor our beloved lost family and friends. This year, we've chosen our very dear friend, Douglas Cooper. I'm gonna introduce some people that I know, some people I don't know. To my right here is Ms. Gloria Cooper, Duck's wife, and her sister Virginia. I'll introduce our crew, Cheryl and Joe Lucio. They're part of the 5K Planning Committee. Back here holding Mr. Charles Bourne is my husband, Johnny Rosales. And I'm gonna pass this on to Mr. Adam Rossinger. Okay? Hang on.
I want to thank you all for honoring my good friend and colleague over a long time, Douglas Cooper. He was a very, a good man to work alongside in the last, you know, my 11 years here, but him at the city for 21, over multiple departments, being the airport, utilities, and public works with us. More importantly, he was a staple of the community, and volunteered and gave his time to many organizations, and I want to say thank you on our behalf as friends and coworkers for honoring him.
Thank you, and thank you for continuing this tradition for us. We appreciate it.
release. We're gonna be preparing outside. Thank you.
Whereas the Texas Legislature has declared the month of October as Czech Heritage Month in Texas, and during this month, many Czech festivals are held throughout the state of Texas. And whereas beginning in the late 1840s, Czech settlers came in growing numbers to the Lone Star State, gravitating to the rich soil of the black lands and upper coastal plains, these industrious pioneers created close-knit communities that kept intact their old-world customs while adapting to the challenges of a new land. And whereas since that time, the number and statue of Czech descendants living in Texas has grown tremendously, there are well over 1 million people living in all areas of the state and walks of life who can and walks of life who can claim Czech heritage. And whereas Texans of Czech ancestry take great pride in sharing with the rest of the state their contributions in the areas of art, music, literature, food, folklore, and many other fine customs that are part of Texas's rich, diverse culture. And whereas Czechs have made sacrifices to Texas. The first Texan who gave his life in World War I was a Czech named Dominik Haplov. His hope was for Czech people to be free of Habsburg's dynasty's oppression. Czechs are known for their love of democracy despite living through additional periods of oppression by the German Third Reich and the Soviet Union. And whereas Czechs are renowned for their exemplary work ethic and have established standards of excellence as both private and public citizens to all can aspire. And because generations of Texans of Czech extraction have made many notable contributions, both cultural and historic, to the betterment of our state. And whereas connections of Czechs and Americans flow in both directions. The Czechoslovakian Declaration of Independence was drafted in Washington, D.C. And the Constitution of the First Czechoslovak Republic was modeled on the United States Constitution. The first president of a free Czechoslovakia after World War I, Thomas Marzick, who married an American, cited the profound influence of the writings of Thomas Jefferson and other American Democrats on his own philosophy. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of October twenty twenty-four as Texas Czech Heritage Month and do hereby call upon the residents of San Marcos to join in celebration and honor of our friends of Czech descent.
Well, everybody, my name is Joseph Bartapinka, and the last name is Czech. I'm proud to be in this state representing Czech Heritage Month, which is officially by state law, the month of October. I'm wearing the national team uniform for the Czech Republic's hockey team. They became the world champions this year. And I happened to be there while they were playing, just couldn't afford the tickets. But I thought I'd wear something other than my normal Moravian dress. Most people that immigrated to Texas came in the eighteen forties and they were Moravian. And so I'm hoping that in the future, between things like I do with my students, taking them to Moravia. Just recently, Texas State University, where I work, has entered into an agreement with Musterick University in Moravia. I'm hoping that there will be more and more connections that we can develop between not only the country of my heritage, but the country of a great people that can contribute greatness to not only San Marcos, but also to Hayes County and Texas State University. When it comes right down to it, Madam Mayor, I appreciate everything you've done. I know you also have a proclamation in Czech, written in Czech. We just couldn't, I promise next year I will speak it. I will remember it. I just couldn't get my friend here today to speak in Czech. But it's the first time that I know of that San Marcos has produced a proclamation in Czech. But I want to just say, though, that this is not just about Czechs. It's about everybody. I don't know anybody in Texas that does not like Golitschki. All right? I don't know anybody. But one thing about Golitschki, the word golch actually means circular. And I'd like to think that my heritage, your heritage, we're all part of a circle. And when you celebrate our heritage by having a golch somewhere, that's singular for Golitschki, think about your own heritage. Think about the fact that we are just miles from an incredible university, ma'am, that have students from all over the world. So in a way, San Marcos is one heck of an international city. And frankly, it doesn't matter if you're Czech or whatever. This is the time to celebrate. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.